Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, June 19th, 2017, City Council Meeting. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and we will do the Pledge of Legions.
(inaudible) by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Shelley, at this time, you want to do roll call for us?
I would love to. Albertson, Bueller, Danforth, Manti, absent, Reeffenberger, Roby, Solom, Thorson, absent, Tupper, Philhauer, thank you.
Okay, what I'll do is, number one, we'll start with approval and consent agenda. I'll look for a motion in a second for any discussion. Motion by Bruce, second by Mike. Any questions, concerns, changes? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number two, approve the agenda. I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Randy, second by Glenn. Any question, changes, concerns? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number three, discussion on hiring a marketing firm to assist with sponsorships. Ryan, if you want to come on up, I'm going to, I'm going to turn the show over to Glenn. Glenn has been working tirelessly with Ryan. I'm serious, on a couple of things. So, I'm going to turn this over to Glenn and just let him work with Ryan, and you guys are up.
Thanks, Mayor. As this body recalls, and many of you in the audience that are watching, about six weeks ago, somewhere thereabouts, we engaged Ryan Query with GPS Great Plains Services sponsorship out of Sioux Falls to look at an analysis of primarily our wellness facility, as far as what assets do we have in there that we can potentially generate some revenue by naming rights, sponsorships, whatever you want to call it. And we engaged Ryan to do that valuation, evaluation, whatever you would prefer to call it. And Ryan gave his preliminary report to us two weeks ago. Several of us sat in on a meeting with him, as well as some city staff, and the mayor gave a preliminary analysis. At the end of the day, we kind of look at ourselves, okay, that sounds great, but none of us has the expertise or the time to go through the, what you call the sales execution phase of that project. In visiting with Ryan, Ryan came back to us with a number of different proposals, which would include not only an analysis of the Wellness Center, but also different various venues in town that may lend itself to such an analysis. And having looked at that, we thought, well, maybe it's a situation where we bring Ryan on as an independent contractor for a longer period of time to look at various options around town. And that's where we are right now tonight. So, having said that, Ryan, why don't I turn it over to you, and, you know, we'll chime in as the conversation lends itself.
Certainly. Thanks for having me again. It's been good to be back. Just to kind of piggyback off everything Glenn said, ultimately where we left off is, is I presented the evaluation for the Wellness Center to the project team, and essentially laid out in a variety of different documents what they would need if they wanted, if you guys wanted to, as a city and as a Wellness Center, go forth and conduct the sales execution yourselves. So, that consisted of an inventory catalog, which details out each asset. It consists of a presentation where you can plug and play and customize it for each sponsor or prospect. It consisted of an initial pipeline of prospects. And so, that among various other things was presented to, to the team that was there at the Wellness Center that day. And ultimately, you know, that was designed to be a handoff, or we could look at potentially working at, working together subsequent to that, and having GPS actually go out and perform the execution of the sales themselves. So, that's something that we've done on various other projects with other municipalities. So, from there, we kind of had, had discussions as well about maybe working together on some of the future venues, some of the existing venues you have in town, working on corporate partnerships for those as well, whether it be naming rights, sponsorships, marketing partnerships. And so, I presented three options to, to the city, basically of how we could structure a relationship together over the next year. And, you know, ultimately with the option that I led with, it would be a one-year commitment, two-way commitment, potentially with, you know, an out clause, the ability to revisit it after six months. But, it would probably consist of us, you know, allocating about eighty to eighty-five percent of our resources and time to the city of Watertown over the next year, with the only other project being in Aberdeen, with the city of Aberdeen. So, that's where we kind of left things off, and I think that's an appropriate time to hand it back.
Okay, I'll follow up with a few more, a few questions of my end then, before my colleagues chime in here. You've already answered one of them. So, you'd essentially be...
I think, Glenn, what I'm going to do, since we went through your early presentation, I'm going to actually ask, at this point in time, to get a motion from the council before we start asking any questions. So, I'll look for a motion from the council to approve. I think, is there two parts to it?
Tell you what, actually, I had our city attorney prepare something as far as an appropriate motion. So, can I just make that motion?
Absolutely.
I would move that the council delegates the mayor the ability to enter into and execute a contract for sales execution of corporate sponsorships with Great Plains Sponsorship Incorporated. Subject to these terms, that the city adopt the terms on page three of the corporate partnerships' sales execution proposal, and specify the four twenty-five-thousand-dollar installment option. That's my motion.
Okay, so I do have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second for that?
Point of clarification, Mayor. The six-month provision will be, okay, just clarifying.
We're going to put that in hold for the time being, councillor. Just a few questions now from...
Hold on. So, I have a motion on the floor, and I had a second by somebody down there. Bill. Okay, so I have a motion and a second on the floor. All right, now I will open it up for discussion. Thank you.
Sorry for jumping the gun there. You've already answered one of my questions. So, you'd be essentially full-time over the course of this next twelve months. Is that correct? You said eighty to eighty-five percent?
Yeah, so the only other project, just in complete transparency, I'm working on is for naming rights at a softball, baseball complex in Aberdeen. So, that takes a much smaller percentage of my time, and I just wrapped up the other project I was working on in Sioux Falls. So, I think as I've mentioned to a couple of you guys, I, this lends itself good to our company, and even my own family, and just timing and everything. So, this would be the brunt of our time, over three-fourths of what I'd spend my time doing.
Okay. And again, this covers numerous venues around town besides the Wellness Center, which is what got the whole process started with you, just a point of...
Correct. So, with that option that you made a motion to pass, I would, Great Plains Sponsorship would essentially be at the city's disposal. So, you know, obviously, we know that the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center and the sales execution there is of the most urgency. But as you guys may say, okay, well, next we want to look at this venue and that venue. As those come about, we would be at your disposal to perform the evaluation and perform sales execution.
And on the Wellness Center, that facility's been open the better part of three months now. Are we still okay with the timing as far as, you know, going forward with that project? I mean, we're not too late on that?
No, I think we're right, right in that window, over the next sixty to one-hundred-and-twenty days, where we're in the prime spot. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it to get to the point where it's nine months, two a year and past. So, I think we're right, and we're in a good situation there.
And again, the motion that I just made, there's no guarantees involved in that. So, if for whatever reason it doesn't pan out on your end or our end, I mean, there's no guarantee that's being made. Is that correct?
Correct. And there's also, so there's, besides our track record with other municipalities, which lends itself to show that there's always, always a good return, there is no guarantee. But at the same time, if you look at the documents that were presented to you guys, the inventory catalog, the presentation, the, you know, some of the conservative estimates for revenue generation are, you know, in that two-to-three-hundred-thousand-dollar-a-year annual basis, just for the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center.
Who would you primarily be working with here in Watertown if we approve this?
Well, as, as long as you're at the disposal, I mean, I would, I would just say that it's always good to have a...
I'll second that motion, too.
It's good to have a, you know, one, maybe two, you know, direct points of contact. The fact that I can reach out to Justin directly is helpful with the contract side of things. Then beyond that, with each facility, so the Prairie Lakes Wellness Facility, whether it's John or somebody else there, making sure I establish a point of contact. So, when it comes to facilitating partnerships, I have, you know, it's best to have one point of contact, but I can be pretty fluid with that.
I don't want to belabor the point, because you filled us in when you were, before this group before. But just give us a real quick recap of, you know, some of your experience in this area.
Sure. I'll specifically talk to the experience in South Dakota. And so, I oversaw all the sales at the Denny Sanford Premier Center, which equated to a little over seventeen million dollars, which to this day is allowing that facility to operate in the black. And so, that consisted of about eight million dollars worth of sponsorships or corporate partnerships, and the other, you know, nine to ten million being in premium seating. Oversaw all the corporate partnership sales at the city of Sturgis for the Seventy-Fourth and Seventy-Fifth Sturgis Motorcycle Rally, with the city of Sturgis, the mayor and his team being my client, and quadrupling their annual revenue from year to year. And then oversaw the execution of the naming rights to the Midco Aquatic Center in Sioux Falls. I did an evaluation for the Washington Pavilion in Sioux Falls to basically give them that roadmap, which they've successfully taken and put into action. So, those are, those are some of the more local examples. I can give more if anybody would like them.
I think that takes care of my question. So, anybody else want to chime in?
Well, first of all, I'd like to just comment on the concept. First of all, and we are in full agreement that we really have no one within the city organization structure today to be able to do this. We don't have the experience. We don't have the time from to do it on a volunteer basis. So, to go to somebody like Ryan that has done this, done it as a career, I think is, is the right direction for us to go. Ryan, if I understand you correctly, if we were to go with the one-year agreement, would we be able to be giving you direction in regards to any of our facilities and any opportunities? So, it's, it's the whole bundle that you would be working on? It's just a matter of what we have you working on, correct?
Correct. So, I would, I would, you know, without a doubt, you guys being GPS's client would be in charge of what direction we want to head. I would certainly provide insight as to the urgency of the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center, but I could also be candid in the fact that, hey, I would have the capacity to maybe take on, let's move on to another project, and maybe start doing both and transitioning into another. So, the answer to your question is yes. It would be any city facility or area or opportunity or event, even that we wanted to generate supplemental revenue for via corporate partnerships, that would be at your guys' disposal, and we just would really want to rank in the highest priority.
Because I think the other thing that, that is good for us to take a look at the bigger picture versus just the one facility, is that some of these may lend themselves to be where we may have a sponsor that may be interested in more than one facility. For example, to have somebody that knows our other facilities, knows what those opportunities are, as you speak to a potential or prospective sponsor, that might be something that you could bring to the table and tie a couple of things together. So, I think that's a very positive thing as well, why we should be taking a look at the bigger picture more so than just the Wellness Facility.
Yeah, and that, you nailed it on the head there, that some of the existing relationships that my company has with folks that have been sponsors and companies that have been sponsors, whether it's in Sioux Falls, or Sturgis, or Aberdeen, those relationships will even lend themselves to perhaps some of your guys' facilities. And as we go from facility to facility, what, what we always discover is that maybe, maybe the Wellness Center isn't a fit for a particular, you know, restaurant or construction company or bank, but let's say an anticipated hockey arena, golf course, or zoo is. And so, really getting to, getting grained over the course of a year, and understanding the different businesses and corporate entities in the city, getting to know their marketing initiatives, it makes it a lot easier to know who to come back to and make that problem, you know, just really streamline things.
In your agreement with us, if we look at the one-year agreement, do you cover all your expenses, or are they, are there expenses that we're responsible?
The way we have it worded now, which is essentially what was proposed, is I cover all my out-of-pocket expenses except for the hotel. You guys have been covering lodging, so I would pay for, you know, transportation, entertainment for clients, any sort of internal compensation that I may have to pay somebody to be in Aberdeen when I can't, and things like that. So, the only expense that you guys have had, as far as associated with, with us, has been lodging.
Okay. Shelley, if we were to approve this, we've got, in essence, we've got six months, which would be two payments, that would not have been budgeted for in the 2017. Where were our options for this to come from?
You basically have two choices. This is not an appropriate use for the second penny sales tax, doesn't fit the criteria. So, you would have the general fund, or you would have the third penny sales tax, our BBB, which is basically collected and used to promote the city. That would be my recommendation. I think it's a better fit, but that's up to you eight that are here. If you wanted to come out of the general fund, you'd have to specify whether you'd want contingency funds to be used, or if you would want it to come out of just the unallocated fund balance that we have available.
So, does the method of funding need to be a part of the motion?
If, you want me to pick?
Well, no, we have a motion on the floor that does not say anything about funding. So, my guess is, knowing you, you're going to want it in the motion.
Unless you want me to pick. Yeah.
Well, you know, I think that the two of three has been doing extremely well, and I think it kind of flows right into that, under the marketing arm of Watertown.
Yes. That's where I would code it to, if, if you guys don't give a direction. The other two payments will go through the regular budget cycle, and then you can have more discussion on that. But I think it's overall a better fit, just off the top of my head, so...
Okay. So, I agree with that, but it doesn't then need to be part of the motion that's on the floor?
Okay.
You know, I think it's important for everybody to know, especially the folks maybe listening on TV, that this is not something that we've come to agree on, or come to a contract on quickly. I mean, there's been a lot of meetings, a lot of discussion that's taken place. And so, this has been going on for a while. I just want people to know that.
So, Ryan, well, you do most of this work yourself. I mean, are you the one? Are you going to have other people come in? And the second thing I'm wondering is, will you go locally for the money, or do you anticipate going into the cities, and, I mean, all around the country that you have contacts, so...
Great questions. Yeah, so, the way I have it designed and planned now, yes, it'd be me here. I'd be the one working on this, just given the nature and the scope of the projects, and now the fact that I've become quite intimate with, with the city, the Wellness Center, and what's going on. So, yes, that would be, would be me. The only reason I would bring on somebody else at my own expense would be is if we got one too many things going, and I absolutely needed the help. But more than likely, that would only be administrative anyway, so it wouldn't be something that would be seen. And I will always start locally. So, the, the initial pipeline that I've provided, which will constantly grow and evolve, is, is local businesses. A lot of the businesses that are members of the chamber. So, yeah, I always start locally, but I will work out a little bit as needed. Regional companies, there'll be companies that are in other, you know, small to mid-sized towns that'll, that'll have interest perhaps. Maybe not as much in the Wellness Center, because that really is more of a facility dedicated to Watertown, and maybe a couple of other smaller cities. But if we start talking about something that's going to bring in the zoo, for example, you know, that brings in people from around the state, maybe even bordering states, at that point, you know, I will, I'll, I'll go where the potential prospects are that do have the wherewithal to, to be sponsors. But I always prefer and do start local and work my way out.
Per se, with the, with your work with the Midco Aquatic Center in Sioux Falls, I mean, that's Sioux Falls, Midco, somewhat local, but then again, regional also, so...
And yeah, and so, there's a great example of Midco, you know, I started with probably, because that was a pretty significant investment for whoever was going to be the naming rights partner. So, I started local, and did meet with some companies that were outside of Sioux Falls, or at least headquartered outside of Sioux Falls. But, you know, Midco, for example, is also somebody that I would have a conversation with, perhaps on some of the other facilities here, that I had a conversation with in Sturgis. And so, there are partners like that, that may be based in Sioux Falls, but have a strong presence in the other communities as well.
Any other questions?
Just a final comment. I think it's a unique opportunity that lends itself by engaging Ryan and GPS for the city.
And I think, Randy, you brought this up a year or so ago, you know, to, to look at this type of a program. And I think it's something that, when we visited Tracy Turbeck, he gave you a glowing report, and it's shown on the projects that you've worked on. And as a group that did work with you, we're very, very impressed. So, if there's no more questions at this time, what I'm going to do is look for council action. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ryan. We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
You can give us an update on your sales progress tomorrow.
Okay, number four, proposed lease agreement with the Fleming for city-owned farmland located at the Watertown Regional Airport. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. I am going to look for a motion in a second for discussion, then we'll turn it over to Justin. Motion by Randy, second by Mike. And Justin, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. The council may recall at the last city council meeting that there was a notice of intent to enter into this lease agreement. And here it is before you. The parties involved are Ben Austin, Preston, and Todd Fleming. And I think that Todd can explain in somewhat greater detail as to their relationship to the city, particularly Todd Fleming's, and the history there involving the haying of the airport. Terms in this agreement, pricing and whatnot, came from, from the airport. My understanding is that this contract was in fact signed by the parties, the less C parties, on Friday. And so, they agree to these terms. The special items I would note here in this agreement are that they are for three years, this lease agreement's for three years. The portions of the airport that are covered under this lease are denoted in the exhibits, and you will see the multitude of lots that exist on Exhibit A. Those are all FAA lots, or FAA-designated lots. And then those are color-coded in, or denoted in Exhibit B as to whether or not they're a part of the lease agreement. And then Exhibit C denotes where there cannot be any bales placed for FAA, per FAA regulations. The terms of the agreement, sixty-three dollars and twenty-five cents per acre, plus twelve round bales of hay that would be transported at the Fleming's expense to Bramble Park Zoo each year. Beyond that, we have the traditional indemnification and right of termination provisions in here. So, the city is protected against suits, actions, damages, and liability brought against it for any of the services envisioned under this agreement. So, I'm happy to answer any further questions from a legal standpoint, and Todd can fill you in on some of the substantive items as well.
Todd, these people have been, they have to go through training through FAA, correctly? And they've been doing it for how long?
This is their fourth year. No, I'm sorry, sixth year. Correct.
Any more questions for Todd or Justin on this? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Todd. Number five, proposed lease agreement with One Vision Aviation P L C for city-owned land located at the Watertown Regional Airport. At this time, again, I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is their opportunity. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. I am going to look for a motion in a second for, for discussion purposes. And then, Justin, I'll turn it over to you and Todd.
I'll move.
Motion by Dan, second by Don. Justin, if you want to take that on.
Thank you, Mayor. This also was provided in a notice of intent at the last city council meeting. The requisite notice being provided since and now a public hearing. This lease comes before you as a result of the existing, or the soon-to-be nonexistent, I don't know the exact status at this point, of AirCo Aviation. But they currently serve as the fixed base operator at the Watertown Regional Airport. And that service as fixed base operator includes flight training, aircraft rental, minor airframe and power plant repair, the ability to sell aircraft, the ability to fuel and dispense oil for aircraft, and a federally-approved air taxi and air charter service. Essentially, with AirCo Aviation's sale of its assets to One Vision, One Vision would like to enter into this lease of ground, effectively, there at the airport. That's what this lease covers. It is for a period of twenty-four years, with the option to renew for successive twenty-four-year terms, three successive twenty-four-year terms. This is in keeping with the long-term lease provisions in statute whereby municipal property can only be so encumbered for a maximum of ninety-nine years. The provisions in here, in terms of rent, reflect much of what we saw in the prior agreement. However, there are a few exceptions which Todd can touch on. The lease premises is depicted in the exhibits at the back, Exhibit A in particular. Exhibit C provides the monthly activity report, which is essentially what One Vision would report to the airport on, on a monthly basis, to denote, you know, what its services were, how much of fuel it, it used from the airport. And so, basically providing a basis for, you know, the city's billing of, of their use of the facilities. So, with that, if you have any other questions, the one thing I would add is that you may recall with the fixed base operator previously, that there was a percentage of the rent that was not charged. It was sort of a step up each year. Under this agreement, under Exhibit D, there would be a two-year step up, and then years three to six would be under the one-hundred-percent rate of rental, as well as, the fuel rate would remain unchanged, it would be four cents. And after six years, then, we have a provision in this contract whereby the city can renegotiate prices with One Vision.
So, Todd, are you going to tell us all the differences between the previous lease terms and this one? Because all we got here is this one, right?
Right. He touched, Justin touched on ninety-nine percent of them. The only thing I really want to touch on that's different is the, this step-up program right here. The last few we've had were five-year step-ups, as he had said. And this, this one, we want to do it a little tighter, just for budgeting reasons. So, we went three years.
Which is our benefit.
Correct.
I don't know, Todd, if you can, in further answering Councilman Danforth's question, there was a particular ground portion that had its rate increase in terms of rent? Do you recall which that was?
I do not at the moment. I believe it was for ramp space.
That is my understanding as well.
Ramp space?
Yes.
Yep. So, we went with a fifteen cents a square foot, just like we do any other space at the airport.
For whatever reason, under the prior lease, it was a little bit less.
Right. And since we charge fifteen cents a square foot to everybody else who rents ramp space, we don't want to discriminate. So, this got raised up to the average rate we're charging now.
Todd, I have a question about the term. I recognize in a... I recognize in an operation like this, you don't want a short-term lease, but why is it twenty-four years, and why three twenty-four-year extensions? What's the rationale behind that?
Uh, usually these don't turn over as fast, so the longer lease helps both of us, uh, as far as a, a steady client at the airport, and for them to have some satisfaction in a longer-term lease, uh, to give them some more satisfaction of staying there, so. Does that answer the question?
It does. Is that, is that standard in, in FBO leases, or?
It is. Actually, they're, they're actually there, a lot of them are longer than that, uh, but due to the, the statutes that we have to follow, uh, every new lease that we go into now has to stand, uh, follow the standard proper, uh, channels now. So, we're, it used to be fifty years, I believe. The last lease, I believe, was fifty years. And, uh, this one, we had to drop down to the twenty-four, to stay under the ninety-nine if we were going to hit the, the three recurring.
Maybe Jim can come up and kind of give us a little idea of what's going on out here, and, and, uh, the term of the lease, and things like that, if, if that's okay with you guys? Yeah, Jim, why don't you come on up? I didn't even call you Jerry this time, did you notice that?
That's good.
Nice. Maybe tell us a little bit about you, Jim, we'd like to hear.
Well, I've been in aviation since, uh, ninety-one. Um, been to big cities, small towns, um, I do like the small-town atmosphere. Um, the larger cities, yeah, that's, we'll, we'll stay right here. But no, I, I have some big plans. Um, you'll, you'll probably see a lot of me. I'm hoping I will be here quite a bit, um, and hopefully down the road, uh, we'll be, uh, we'll be building a larger hangar out there, so I'm, I'm pretty, pretty excited about this. Um, what really brought me up here, besides the airline, is, um, you guys have a, a school at the airport, which I'm always looking for, for mechanics, so I'm very, very excited to have a school here in the, in Watertown, so.
We touched on the Part 145.
Um, currently, the, the hangar's not a Part 145. For people that don't know a Part 145, most airlines require you to be a Part 145 to work on their aircraft, so I will make the transition with the government as soon as I can to a Part 145. Um, it does look like I'll do a satellite from my facility in Sioux City, so, uh, um, Iowa FAA will be up here quite a bit watching over me, but, uh, um, it's, it's possible I could do a completely separate 145 up here, and then I'll do it with Rapid City FAA. So, two options, I haven't, uh, my FAA knows what I'm doing up here, so, uh, we'll, we'll see what direction they want me to take, but, uh, we'll be talking to Rapid City and my FAA in Des Moines to see which, which direction, uh, transition will be the easiest.
My understanding is you're currently working with ADI a lot, and, and that airline did kind of trip your trigger just a little bit to get up here, but...
Correct.
Who, who else do you work with, or who else are you, uh, planning on? Maybe you can say, maybe you cannot, I don't know.
Yeah, I wish I could say, but a lot of, a lot of the major airlines I do work for, um, um, I'll throw a couple names. We do a little work for, uh, some of the Delta subsidiaries quite a bit, so, uh, um, I, I, I don't want to throw any names out there, because...
Yeah, that, that's fine.
Right, right.
Absolutely. I, I fully understand that.
Right.
Any guys got any questions for Jim, or, or, or Todd?
Jim, what, could you tell us, could you share a little bit about what you do in Sioux City right now? What's happening down there?
Uh, right now, uh, we do a lot of heavy checks. We tear, planes come in, uh, they're normally there for about two weeks to a month. We completely tear them down, inspect them, and put them all back together. Um, another, another part of business that we're, we strive in is kind of our forte. Um, about two months ago, a, a plane hit a deer on takeoff in Charlotte, North Carolina. Um, they called us, uh, we were there that day, uh, we had it fixed within five, five days after the aircraft hit the deer. So, a lot of airlines call us, um, I always got guys ready with the suitcases packed, and, and, uh, the tool bags packed, and, uh, it's not, it's very common for us in the middle of the night to get a phone call, and we're, we're on the road. So, um, with that being said, we do a lot of work, we're a one-stop shop, we, we paint aircraft, we do it all. We're a one-stop shop in Sioux City, and, uh, hopefully soon, we, we can have a hangar here in Watertown that does the, the same thing, so.
You know, I see in the, in the back, we have our LATI instructor here, and this guy has pulled like Learjets all the way through downtown. Can you come up and talk to us for a minute? Come on. Jim, you can hang tight there. He can sit next to you, no problem.
Hi, Jim.
Good to meet you, Jim.
All right. Tell us what this could possibly do for you guys as a, as a school.
Well, we've, um, had a good working relationship with the FBO. I, I consider Scott a, a good friend, and we want to continue that relationship with the new owners. Um, this is a good opportunity for us, I think, to work with the, um, work with the FBO. As far as, um, training mechanics, um, they can work with us, and we can work with them, and they'll get trained, you know, in their procedures, and it, I, I guess I call it grow your own. Um, so, I think it's going to be a great opportunity.
And you guys already have CIPs on staff, do you not, that can work with the...
CFIs, uh, flight instructors.
Flight instructors, I'm sorry, yes.
Yep, we've got, yep, we're, we're, we've got the base work, good base work, but, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, working with Jim and, and seeing where we can go with all that.
Perfect. You guys got any questions for...
Jim, have you had any of, of LATAs? This is just more of a personal question, I guess. LATAs graduates from their aviation program come to work for you like in Sioux City, or...
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Not, that they're saying that it didn't happen, but not that...
But that would be a huge possibility.
I would take his whole class right now if he were graduating, I promise you.
That's what we like to hear, so...
I would take his whole class, I promise you.
I guess, I guess another factor is, you know, there's a lot of folks from, from South Dakota, I mean, we're the only A and P school in North Dakota, South Dakota, and, uh, Wyoming. And, um, a lot of the folks that, that come to school here would like to stay in this region, so I think this will be a good opportunity for, you know, people that graduate from our program to, to, to stay here.
That's kind of where I was heading at with that question. Where do most of them go to now? I mean...
They're, they're all over the world.
All over the...
Literally all over the world. I mean, this, just this, uh, graduating class that we just had, there's people in California, Utah, uh, some, we've got some folks working drones overseas, uh, one built spaceships, you know, we got a person working for a spaceship company, um, they're, they're all over.
Well, thank you. Is there any other questions for either, either gentleman?
Uh, actually, I have a question for Todd, or maybe Mayor, maybe you, but...
Certainly, no.
Uh, if, if Jim were to, you mentioned building a, you know, a, uh, a new building for, i- is that something that goes on our property and we lease it to them, and that's their investment capital-wise in that building?
Exactly.
Thus another reason why you want a longer-term commitment in regards to this, this lease?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. We own the ground their building sits on.
And most of that ground that you're leasing has been released, has it not?
Uh, some of it.
So that mean that you can...
Some of it, and we're working towards releasing more.
Very good. Any other questions? All right, I have a motion in a second on the floor. Uh, at this particular time, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jim. Lisa?
Thank you, guys.
Dustin? All right, I got it. Okay, number six, Valley View addition, annexation and zoning. Shane, I'm going to let you talk about it a little bit before we, uh, we'll go into the two steps here. You have an annexation, you have second reading ordinance seventeen-twenty-six, you have a public hearing and council. What, what do you guys prefer?
Six A.
Yep. Six A, we need annex first.
I'll just start on that, and then I will ask for a motion in a second on that for discussion.
Get a motion in a second.
You want it right now?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go ahead and get the motion in a second for discussion purposes. I have a motion by Bruce.
Sure.
Second by Mike. Shane, you go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, item six A is the annexation of a portion of, um, the Valley View addition. It's, um, my picture's on the...
Yes.
Okay, so, it does not include this square here, which is a separate parcel, but everything around where my arrows tracing is part of Phase One, so that's the first portion of the Valley View addition that's proposed to be annexed, and following, pending approval of the annexation, then we'll take a, action on the zoning for the, this district. This is part of a large development, a hundred and thirty-eight acres. This is just Phase One of that development, and that development is prop, uh, at this time going through our planning, uh, procedures through the Planning Commission meetings. Any questions?
Questions for Shane, go ahead. Yep, go ahead on the annexation.
With the ann, okay.
No questions on annexation? All right, I do have a motion in a second on the floor, our discussion is clear. At this time, I'll look for council ac, certain action for the annexation, resolution number seventeen dash thirteen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll go on to B, second reading ordinance number seventeen-twenty-six, amending zoning district boundaries by zoning the Valley View addition to our one single-family residential district, our two single-family attached residential district, and our three multifamily residential district. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone wants to speak in favor of, or against this, this is your opportunity. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. I will look for a motion in a second for discussion purposes.
Oh, sure.
Motion by Randy, second by Bruce. Shane, if you'll take this.
Okay, so, this, uh, shaded drawing is, uh, a representation of the proposed zoning for the property you just annexed into the city. The areas in red is R1, uh, residential zoning. This little block of blue is R2 residential, and this lighter blue is R3 along the edges. And, um, we did have quite a bit of discussion about why there's R3 without, um, a buffer a, around them, and R3 in this particular portion of Block Five is primarily to accommodate, um, the geometry of the subdivision, and also with the anticipation that this portion that is not part of the annexation, or, or part of this project, may be zoned, uh, a commercial district. So, that R3 would fit better with the, the anticipated, our, our commercial development. And then, uh, to the north here, too, which also kind of abuts that same commercial district, is, um, a street that, or the property that will border Second Street West, and Second Street West, we're kind of using the R3 as a buffer, um, between the other R1 developments across the street to the east. And all of those lots are proposed to not have driveways out onto Second Street West, so we thought the higher-density, um, units would, would help eliminate some of the, uh, anticipated driveway issues with that part of the development. So, with that, any other questions?
Uh, Shane, um, I, I'm, I would mention this at our last meeting, uh, when we had our first discussion about this. My concern, again, is the R3. Um, the R3 that we've got in, at Second Street West, I, I wouldn't have as much an issue with that because of the size of the, of the, the lots. The plats, the, the lots are plated fairly small. Um, you know, that might be an opportunity for some type of, of, uh, for a better term, maybe row housing, housing, like, like summer would, something like that. But where I do have an issue in my many years on the Planning Commission, um, and it's kind of planning 101, that is not a good idea, in my opinion. Uh, even though it abuts, and that is, that's a good thing, that it does abut a good chunk of it to that open area, but you still have twelve residences, some of them are across the street, but some of them are adjacent. You got four properties that are adjacent to that, and, and they may want to just use it for duplexes, I don't know. But it still opens the door for apartments, and I think the, you're going to have parking issues, you're going to have snow removal issues, people parking on the street. I don't, I, I don't honestly know what the parking provisions are for that section of R3, but that large one, I would be against that. I, I think that needs to be R2.
Okay, and that was vetted out in our meetings, and I think the, the baseline decision, why the Planning Commission approved this to bring to you was primarily because they can easily, um, go backwards to R2 or R1 with that zoning. It's much more difficult to go forward, so they thought that they would ask for the highest use, and then move back towards something else if that's what, where we desired. And I guess you have the right to, uh, change and modify this. What this would do then, would, we would have to come back with a, um, uh, another first reading and, and a second reading, and, and if you choose to do that, that's the path it will take. But we did vet that, that was the, the bottom line of the discussion, was that R3 is the highest use of, possible for that, and they could back off, but it's very difficult to go the opposite direction.
Well, but we're being asked to approve it with the highest population.
Right. Well, this is very similar to the...
Which is the R3. And Shane and I, I, I will tell you, similarly to Bruce, who spent a lot of time on Planning Commission Board of Adjustments, and it all looks good on paper, but when the time comes and all of a sudden, that's an empty lot, and somebody comes in and they're going to put a building in there, those people that have spent money around them all get upset. We've seen it time and time again...
Ri- right.
...within the community.
Yep.
And then it comes to the Plan Commission or to the council, and it looks like we didn't do our jobs.
True.
And...
I'll give you a couple examples of what this kind of emulates. If you think of Kemp Place that just got constructed here a year or so ago, we do have some R3 abutting those lots that are going to be R1, you know, around that pond that was built. So, this is kind of one way to try to intermix some R3 apartments into R1, and I mean, I, I get it, I know it's not ideal to not have an R2 buffer in there, but to not have any apartment buildings is also probably not a wise thing in, in all these new subdivisions either, but that was one example. The other example is, on West Fourteenth Street, we have that R3 that's down around Twenty-Second Street, you know, that kind of blends into the, to the neighborhood. It's a, it is an R3 in a primarily R1 neighborhood, but we do have it in other places in town, and this is what the request is. If you want to change it, again, uh, I'm listening.
And out in that area, though, we have had concerns expressed over time with some of the development that was looking to go in some of those, too.
Yeah, I'm sure, Shane, there's locations that would lend themselves better to this, but from my experience, this, you, you need that buffer. I think we need to buff, and, and if we, maybe it is a little more difficult, but down the road, if we have to change it, we can go through that process. We can do that.
But, but again, Bruce, we're approving it as is.
No, I, I, that's why I'm saying...
Everything that fits within the R3 is, can, gonna go in there just like we do.
That's right, and, and this is what we're asking tonight. We're asking for this. And, and no, that's, I, I agree with you, Mike. I, I, I just don't think this is the right thing for that property.
When I asked about this last, I mean, my concern, Bruce brought up some good points, but traffic was the one I, was really on my list. I just, I think that if you leave that as R3, the potential for a large, uh, multifamily complex goes in there, I don't know if the, are the streets going to be able to handle that, and, and, you know, is that going to clog things up?
I do have one other question, really, probably not on zoning or anything, but it's Rob here. Rob, do you have any, any concerns with the three cul-de-sacs that are in there? I mean, historically, we've tried to stay away from cul-de-sacs for snow removal, for garbage disposal, because they're just hard to get in. What, what's your feeling on that?
Right, we did discuss that at the design review team meetings, and, and it, it is a concern about cleaning the cul-de-sacs out. It's, the way we handle it now, we do hire a contractor to circle up all the, the cul-de-sacs, and then we go back days later, uh, when we get done with cleaning the rest of streets, and we haul it out. So, generally, we do have to haul snow out of the cul-de-sacs. So, it's, it's, it is, and in this area, we did discuss it where the lay of the land and the contours and stuff, it's, it's one of the few ways to make it work, so it was harder to find a different way to make it work without cul-de-sacs.
So, from your perspective, and what you've been a part of, this is okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Shane, what do you think if, if Block Five, that big blue spot, we required that to be What do you think the developer would, would do?
I think they would probably accept it, and then if they choose to make a, a variation of it later, they would come before you again with a request to change it from R2 to whatever they desire.
Right, and I think that's really a, that would satisfy, I think, a lot of the concerns of going... of going into the R three. If, if we don't accept R three, go R two, and if they have something that comes in at the time, let them come back in front of the bodies and, and make that decision at that time.
I know I would feel more comfortable going in that direction than I would give a blanket approval on the R three myself.
And Shane mentioned that that, that was brought up, that was a long discussion at the planning commission, just that very thing. Should it be a three, or should it be R three, or should it be R two for the buffer? And they were trying to figure out ways to buffer it in some other way, and there just didn't seem to be any way to do it. And like they said, it's, if you start with R three, it's easier to go to R two. But I, I don't think that the planning commission would have any issue, even though they approved it.
No, I think actually from the developer's standpoint, they felt that they, that the city would desire some R three in this hundred and thirty-eight acre lot, or parcel plan. And they felt that this was probably the best location to try to do an R three, because the rest of it's gonna be all R one. And so that, that was kind of the premise, but if, I'll, we'll do R two, and I'll bring this back for a first reading next council meeting.
Now, we have a motion, a second on the floor. Do we need to amend that motion so that it sends it back down?
Yeah, if, if we can just, because the, the motion is to approve the ordinance as is, so somebody would need to make a substitute motion to change, to make that change.
Randy made that motion.
To substitute mo- no, no, have somebody, I don't care who does it, somebody needs to make a substitute motion to change those two zones from R three to R two, and then have a second on the, yep, yep. So however you wanted to read, make sure that you do that, and then vote on that, and then it'll come back for a first reading.
So you want a substitution from someone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I would like to take Randy's motion, and, and I would like to make a substitute motion removing block five as R three and replacing that with R two.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? And Don, second that. Any other discussion on it? Hearing none, I'll look for council, and you want, and this is being sent back down to the planning commission, look at this. So hearing none, I'll look for council action.
No, it does, it'll just come back here as first reading, next-
Talk to the developer and-
Yep, it'll come back here as first reading, and then a second reading.
Very good. All right, so I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, number seven, ordinance number seventeen dash two-two, amending section eighteen point zero one zero one and twenty-one point six five zero one to exempt contractors' trailer, shipping trailers, and moving trailers from certain parking provisions. This is second reading. I will look for a motion, a second from the council. Motion by Bill. Second by Glenn. And go ahead, Justin, I'll let you handle that.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't belabor this too much, because this is effectively the third time this language has been brought up before you with slight modification. You'll recall the slight modification was adding a provision that had existed in an ordinance proposed before the planning commission. But the thought was that if it was better served and better organized to be placed in section eighteen oh one oh one, it should go there. So that yellow highlighted portion was what caused us to reset the, the meetings and go back to a first meeting on this language. Ultimately, the overview is straightforward. The, the changes wrought here came from a concern about commercial trailers being caught up in our, in our ordinances for on-street parking. And the thought was that if contractors were diligently working at sites, they shouldn't run afoul of some of our on-street parking provisions by virtue of leaving their trailers overnight in a safe place. So included in this language are provisions that get to that, as well as the requirement that commercial trailers, much like other trailers, be parked in a place that does not pose a threat to public safety. You know, ensuring that provisions that belong in zoning ordinance that implicate parking, both are placed in zoning ordinance, and those that relate to on-street parking that implicate the city's police powers are placed in eighteen oh one oh one. One final point to make, you, you might have caught in my memo that I made reference to in the red lettering there, that there's only one provision provided here under sub five of eighteen oh one oh one as proposed. Initially, I thought only to include that sub-five, sub-A provision, and not the sub-B. But in taking a greater look at the way our ordinances are structured, it made sense that if there were provisions of unique importance to Lake Campesca and Lake Pelican, and there are a number of areas where sidewalks and trails sort of form up to become a part of the roadway, that it, it made sense to have a provision that is otherwise duplicated elsewhere, uniquely located under the Lake Campesca or Lake Pelican ordinance. And if the council feels that this is duplicative and not needed, I can certainly strike, that would be a substantive revision that would require this go back yet again to a first reading. But, so that's, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Now, Justin, this, if we do this, does it allow them to leave that trailer for weeks upon a time, or is there something in there that will say that it can only be twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours or something to that effect?
That's an excellent question, Mayor, and it's a worry that we had, you know, in talking to folks internally who've had to deal with this issue here at City Hall, talking to folks on both sides of the issue out in the public. We've inserted, and this is in eighteen oh one oh one, sub-two, that second part in track changes there down at the bottom, "commercial trailers of those contractors actively performing improvements to real property." I, I highlight actively because that's the operative phrase. A reasonable interpretation of actively is to say, you can't go away from the job site for a week at a time and expect your trailer to be lawfully parked there. You need to be working diligently. And if that means it can be parked over the weekend because you work on an eight-to-five, you know, Monday through Friday, that's still active, but just not long periods of time away from the job site. That's, that's what that would exclude.
So in other words, a contractor that moves from one job site to the next, and he's not working on this job site, do we have anything in there that, that stays a, a certain amount of time?
Sure, we don't have anything in there that is explicit on amount of time. And the thought there was, we broached that concept. From a legal standpoint, it makes my job easier, and some of our internal administrative type, you know, experts said, but from a policy standpoint, it, it becomes more difficult because, you know, there are such things as extenuating circumstances, there are such things as the nature of the project, you know, requiring that you may need to go away to get other parts, other goods to come back, and you aren't there working, you know, for a twenty-four hour period.
Another contractor's doing part of it, and you had to step away from them, yeah, I guess that would make sense.
So, yeah, it, it comes down to a reasonableness standard of what actively means.
Justin, another question for you, arterial streets, did we cover that in here? If we do, you might want to mention what areas that they would not be able to park. Now, is this gonna be anywhere where parking's allowed, or is there something that says you can't do this on a, on a arterial street? And my other question, and I've run in this before, and I would bet some of the other folks here have too, where you, it's dark out, you're driving on the street, and there's a big old giant black flatbed sitting out there with hardly any reflectors or anything on it, and you see that the last second. I've had that before too. Do we have any provisions that, that sort of say you gotta have reflectors or cones or something out there to, to kind of keep people from smashing into that stuff?
To answer your second question, Councilman, these provisions here keep with, well, we actually have added into it a requirement that regardless of whether the job site is actively being pursued, the trailer cannot pose a threat to public safety. And so if it's located in a place where it's not going to be readily seen at night, it doesn't have reflectors, it doesn't have cones, if a law enforcement officer reasonably views it as posing a threat to public safety where it sits at that time, then there is the potential for a violation here.
So if somebody sees that, do they call the code enforcement guys, or do they call the police?
You know, it, either, I, I mean, either, either could in theory respond, but I would call the police, I guess, maybe as, as a more immediate, yeah. That's right. Yeah, yeah. You know, in answer to your first question, Councilman, there are provisions obviously in our ordinances with regard to, you know, parking in places where it's marked as no parking, and where other provisions apply. This language really only gets to the twenty-four hour prohibition on parking. So, so, you know, the fact that you have to, if you park on the street, move it within twenty-four hours, I believe a minimum distance of forty feet, or fifty feet, excuse me. And so those other provisions would still apply. So if they aren't supposed to park there, otherwise, they still aren't supposed to park there.
Justin, does this cover commercial dumpsters also?
It does not, Councilman.
Because that, I have seen that where that ends up being more of a tedious thing than some of the trailers. And they'd sit there, and sit there, and sit there. Should this cover those?
We have a new policy that requires dumpsters and other construction-related materials that are placed on the road to be permitted. It's always been, that's always been the case with construction materials. So if you park, if you pile gravel, landscaping rock, timbers, rafters, all that stuff on the street, they need a permit. And we extended that this year to include dumpsters, because I noticed that same thing. A lot of dumpsters get dumped on the, on the street with zero reflectiveness or signage, anything. And so we've been just edging that thing along to contractors as we find them, and get that permit process going. And my goal is actually more on the public safety end of things, because I want to get these guys to put reflective tape, or a reflective cone or sign by those if they're gonna be parked on the street. And actually, by preference, I know a permit seems kind of petty, but if they don't like the permit, put the dumpster on the yard, put the dumpster in the driveway, don't put it on the street. That's what, if they're gonna put it on the street, I want it safe. If it's not gonna be on the street, I'm okay with it. That's where I want it to go.
Justin, just to be clear too, on the bike trail, say around the lake, they, they cannot park there, or they can for a period of time? I, I didn't think we could ever do that, but-
Sure, yeah, no, you cannot. Yeah, not for any period of time.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Justin.
Mayor, before we get off parking, I got a question. I know at the planning commission meeting, at the last planning commission meeting, we, there was the, the lake parking ordinance approved. Is that gonna come before us at the next meeting, or what's the schedule for that?
That is my understanding, that it will come before the council at the next meeting with the revisions.
Okay, moving on, number eight, ordinance number seventeen dash two-eight, amending section seventeen point zero six zero two to expand the list of sump pump and groundwater discharge nuisances. This is second reading. So at this time, I'll look for a motion, a second for discussion. Motion by Glenn, second by John. And Justin, I'll let you take over.
Thank you, Mayor. In the process of drafting up this ordinance, just as a bit of housekeeping, I want to let you know that the state of South Dakota wanted to take a look at this provision, anything that impacts groundwater discharge, really anything that's in our title seventeen is something that the state has a unique interest in. And I did receive confirmation through Mike Berger that the state had conducted its preliminary review of this provision, and stated that they had no issues with it in terms of it contradicting or impacting state statute to an extent that they would, you know, ask to intervene. So they just asked for a copy of this, should the city council approve it. So given that, what we're left with here is a provision that would expand the definition of a nuisance for groundwater discharge to include water that's deposited on the asphalt surface of a street, and specifically sump pump discharge deposited on the asphalt surface of a street or alley when a concrete curb and gutter is available to receive such discharge. Now, you may recall at the last city council meeting when this was discussed, this was prompted by a concerned citizen, and it was a concept that was offered here before the council. Really, what it would amount to is requiring that homeowners take the additional step of ensuring their discharged sump water is directed into the, the concrete curb and gutter, such that it doesn't splash out onto the asphalt. Now, the theory behind this being that asphalt is more susceptible to wearing from water than concrete, hence why curb and gutter is made in concrete. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Justin on this?
Justin, if the, just down the street from where I live there, I can't tell you whether it's actually putting on the concrete or not, but as it goes down the road not far, it's by nature of the, the way the contours are, it then flows across the street. In a scenario like that, as long as they're discharging in the, into the gutter, they would still be okay, correct?
That is correct.
All right.
And, and just to add, you know, this would only apply to places where there is concrete curb and gutter, which I think most places, but, you know, if there are any exceptions out there, it would not apply in those circumstances.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Justin. Number nine, ordinance number seventeen dash two-nine, amending section twenty-four point zero five one three to place into ordinance existing administrative requirements for easements. This is also a second reading. I'll look for a motion, a second for discussion. Motion by Bruce, second by Bill. Justin, if you want to take this.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. What this ordinance does, as brought up at the last city council meeting, is it provides for, provides in writing what has been the general practice administratively in approving plats. In terms of, number one, under twenty-four oh five thirteen, sub-three, there would be the addition of a five-foot utility easement for all other lot lines, which is currently the practice. We have in ordinance currently that ten-foot utility easements exist along any public right-of-way, along the lot line, that abuts a public right-of-way, as well as a rear yard utility easement when a lot, rear yard abuts another lot. The language also is added to here below sub-three to specify what those easements should look like, so that, you know, generally, sometimes what occurs is the, the drafters of these documents don't clearly delineate on the, the mapped portion of the, the plat, where these easements are, but note them in some, some sort of certification on, sometimes even a different page. So this would make all of it plain and evident to a layman where these lot, these easement lines are, and how they, they would be denoted. Finally, there is a provision in here on how to deal with what would be considered obstructions, but generally have been tolerated, AKA at suffrage, by municipal utilities specific to utility easements. So that would be fences and landscaping, such as raised gardens, or gardens that have some sort of barrier surrounding them. The idea being that they are tolerated, but that if any utility work needs to be done in those easements, that any displacement that occurs, any removal of the landscaping is, it's not the responsibility of the utility to put it back into a condition that it existed before. And I would only add finally that this does not apply to drainage easements, those cannot have obstructions.
Any questions for Justin?
Normally on the plot, you see the five foot on the back or ten foot on the back. Are we saying now all sides between are gonna have five feet then? So like this plot that we were just looking at, every lot's gonna have an easement all the way around it?
Correct.
Yes, at least a five foot. And then what we have currently in ordinance is where the ten-foot easements would, would be marked, would need to be marked.
So that's gonna make restrictions with people with fences then, between yards?
No, they can put the fence in there, that, that's an allowed obstruction, but if the, the- That, that's allowed, um, obstruction, but if the, the utility needs to go in and work on whatever equipment is in that utility, and the fence has to come down, then that homeowner has to suffer to put it back up, or, or whatever. The utility company is not gonna put the fence back up if it is allowed to be put in there. So, it's, we already have that, and that's really the practice that we have. It just was a little bit vague, and, and in times, we weren't seeing that five-foot easement depicted on plats, and we thought that a layperson that would look at that, and, at a copy of their plat, would say, "I don't have an easement on my side yard, I can do whatever I want," and that's not, um, the case.
And generally speaking, Councilman, um, you know, when you're putting up a fence, you're going to call 811 when you do that? So you'll have an idea of where the lot line, or where the utility lines are, have a general idea of where the, the conduit is going to...
Well, I understand that, but in most cases, there aren't any there, but the fact that there's an easement means that if the utility at some point in time finds a, that's an easier route, then they have the right to go in there and put it in, where supposedly would've maybe stayed in the backyard. Now they, they have the right to go down the side yard then, if it's...
They currently have the right. It's, this is just a cleanup of language to make sure that we show it, so that everybody understands they have the easement along their side yard.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Justin. Number 10, first reading ordinance number 1730, amending portions of chapter 11.07 to declare tall grass a public nuisance and allow for a remedy revised. Justin, if you will, um, take care of this for us.
Be happy to, Mayor. This, uh, ordinance is backed to you on a first reading, I think, uh, in part because of its importance, and also in part because of, you know, the, the desire to make sure that we get this right, uh, given the nature of this ordinance, and how, you know, it, it appears to impact a decent number of properties in the community, or would, if adopted. Uh, you will recall that we talked about defining noxious vegetation as including, uh, grass that has reached at least, uh, that has reached eight inches in height or greater, uh, that would exclude trees, shrubs, and cultivated flowers or gardens. So we're basically talking grass, or weeds, however you wanna slice it, that goes, grows, uh, up, up to eight inches in height, uh, or grows to eight inches in height or greater. Uh, the point was brought up then about how there are larger properties within the city of Watertown, and that it would be difficult for some of these property owners to be able to comply with this, uh, given sometimes the remoteness of these large lots. And considering the, the fundamental concern, which is, how is this a public nuisance? Well, it's a public nuisance because of concerns about, uh, insects, about the spread of weeds. And so, in looking at other, other, uh, ordinances that existed throughout the country, we hit on what's highlighted in the copy that you have there in yellow, 110712, that additional language that's brought back here for a first reading for your consideration. And that would be that for properties that are greater, that are one acre or greater, there'd be a 25-foot swath around, uh, the edge of the property where that edge abuts either a public right-of-way, or a developed property. Developed property meaning a property with buildings on it, or with public grounds not considered rights-of-ways, such as, uh, parks. So, the thought was that there would be some flexibility there for larger properties to get at the root of what makes grass, tall grass, a public nuisance. Moreover, there were questions made, uh, and I think they were good ones, at the last city council meeting about issues on notice and clarifying, uh, noting the fact that April 15th, we've gone past that deadline for this year for publication notice. So, uh, it's clarified here that simply what's required in ordinance is that from 2018 onward, it needs to be published April 15th, but one type of each notice is necessary for a single property for the entire growing season. So effectively, if this ordinance is approved, then in order for us to be enforcing, we would need to, uh, as a city, provide publication notice once, uh, as well as notice by mail once, and there's a fixed notice once. And then that property would be covered for the entire growing year.
But, what was I nodding at, press, and if we do one, one public notice in the spring, we're covered?
That, that is correct.
Okay, so we don't have to do a public notice, plus the mail, on each and every one? The, the first step is taken care of?
That's right. The publication notice itself, yeah, only needs to be done once for the entire community.
That is correct, yes.
Yep. The, the other methods of notice, the mailing and the affixing, that needs to be done for each individual.
Kenny, maybe you can answer this. As the ordinance sits right now, what, what's a, uh, reasonable time to deal with one of these? I mean, I know every case is different, because you got property owners that may be in foreclosure. And what, and what's the new language gonna do to it?
Well, it's gonna help us quite a bit, actually. It's not gonna really take satisfaction away from not being able to find out who the property owner is, but, uh, the way we've listed it this time now, the, the placard that goes on the door, and the written thing can go out simultaneously. So once he goes and placards the door, he can come back in, and they can send the letter the same day, and then, then five to seven days after that, if we have the proper party, we can take care of it right away. So that's gonna help a lot. I mean, right now, we're, you know, it's taken us 20, 30 days to get some of these things ratified. It's not gonna fix every first, but it's gonna help a lot of them.
Kenny, do we use contractors there, or city?
We are going to. We have discussed it, and we are gonna go out public notification, and we're gonna advertise for quotes for, for public contractors to come in, and hopefully we'll just develop a list, and, and the day that this thing can be taken care of, we'll just go to that list, and start at the top, and can you do it, can you do it, can you do it, and take care of it that way? So that'll also help, help Rob and us.
So when you got a repeat offender, do we gotta go through the notice situation again?
Nope. And once that, if we've mowed it once, and three weeks later it's the same thing, we can go in there and do it right off the bat.
Okay, that's what I like about this, it just...
No other, yeah, so do I, trust me.
Yep. Well, and it's gonna be a lot easier on your staff, because I, I can about imagine how much time you spend trying to notify especially properties that are in foreclosure and stuff like that, so...
This is a very intensive time. You wouldn't believe how much time we spend on this.
Ken, are you the one that's going to have to do that right now, your office? If somebody says, "You'll check, uh..."
Yeah, we currently do it before, and we do it now, but...
Yeah, okay.
But we get lots of help. There's a lot of citizens that don't turn in stuff for us.
At the last meeting, we discussed this notice situation, when we, when you don't have a handle on who is the property owner, but the fact that you do the two notices, you said, Justin, was gonna be adequate, that we don't have to wait in this, for a response back, as long as they've been notified, right?
That is correct.
That'll spell it out pretty much, yep.
I, I've got a question for Justin. I asked you the staff at the last meeting, uh, what about yards, I mean, cause you, you see that more and more, a push going towards native grasses, wildflowers, et cetera. Somebody decides to do that with their yard, what do we do in a situation like that?
Sure. Well, you know, the line between cultivated, uh, as opposed to unintentional, uh, just unkemptness, you know, it, it may be, there may be times when that line is, is difficult to discern. I, I would suggest to you that that's going to be rare. Uh, the features that I've seen incorporating natural grass do it generally in a cultivated manner, an aesthetically pleasing manner. Uh, it's generally not the whole yard, and, uh, it's very difficult, I, I would suggest to you to, to cultivate an entire yard to natural grass. Um, so that's, uh, the examples that I've seen have always been, you know, restricted to a certain area, and so take on the trappings of...
And those would still be able to be dealt with on a case-for-case basis. I mean, if, if it's somebody that's purposely doing that, they're gonna notice the notice and not, they're gonna, they're gonna call ya, put it that way.
Yeah, absolutely. But unless it's a garden or flower plot, or something like that, I don't think we're gonna be on the, above it, so...
Yep.
Kenny, can you tell us, um, about how you're coming on the new court enforcer, officer, court enforcement officer?
Uh, it's currently, it's just internally. I think the internal is done this Thursday, so I, I've heard that we have one application so far. And then if nothing more comes after that, then we'll go out to the public.
Perfect. Okay, well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to number 11. Proposed lease agreement with the Cottin County for city-owned land located at the Park and Recreation Fieldhouse. Uh, I am going to look for a motion in a second on this, before we turn it over to Justin.
So move.
Motion by Dan. Second by Bruce. Justin, if you'll take this for us.
Be happy to, Mayor. This language has already been approved by the Cottington County Commission. Uh, you may recall having seen in the past leases between the city of Watertown and Cottington County, uh, even such as this, where we're dealing with a ground lease for a long-term. They're very straightforward documents, and that tradition continues with this document. Uh, the term goes until November 6, 2035. That is also the ending term on the lease arrangement with the city and county with the ice arena, except the ownership interests are flipped. County owns the ground, the city owns the building. Uh, what's covenanted to here is quite enjoyment, that, uh, the county will be able to use the property, and depicted in exhibit A at the back of this lease, for the purposes of, uh, building and maintaining a storage building, as depicted. Uh, the screening requirement that the council requested is also included in this lease, as you can see. The rent is nominal. The indemnification provision, uh, is that the city will indemnify and hold the county harmless with regard to the access portion, i.e. the portion of property, uh, to get to the county's building that exists over our property, uh, and only for, uh, access liability. The county agrees to indemnify the city for actions, uh, work that it does, basically anything that it does in pursuance of its, uh, uh, storage building. So, that's how liabilities are split up, and then also, we worked out a right of access to the building for the benefit of the county that would follow the entryways that exist there at the fieldhouse, as well as through the parking lot to the actual site where this building is located. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Just a point of clarification, so getting to and from the building, we have liability for that.
That is correct, if we don't maintain it.
As long as you maintain it, they bring in a vehicle that's too big, shouldn't be into whatever, and runs a bunch of stuff over, is that on us?
Yeah, this would be claims arising from any condition of any street curb or sidewalk. That would be a use that wouldn't be envisioned under the way that street curb and sidewalk is, is made, so that would fall onto the county.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 12. Consideration or request for proposals for banking services.
Mr. Mayor, um, I understand this could be a little more complicated than it looks on the surface, so as I understand it, I'm requesting a personal privilege per Robert's Rules of Orders to allow our finance office personnel to offer a presentation on this agenda item without a pending motion.
That'll be fine. So Shelley, if you wanna take this?
I can, I can sure start out, um, give you a little history. There were requests for proposals that were sent out by the city. They were sent out to all the local banks in May, and four proposals were received. Uh, the banks were Wells Fargo, Dakota Bank, Relia Bank, and Great Western Bank. The other three banks, um, sent a decline to bid. Once the sealed proposals were opened and reviewed, um, Relia Bank was determined to be the lowest proposal for monthly service costs, and highest interest received on idle funds. Great Western Bank, uh, was the second, um, for both of those, uh, cost and interest received on idle funds. Uh, at that point, um, I realized that I had a conflict of interest, and that conflict of interest is based on the fact that my husband, David, is an employee at Relia Bank, as most of you are aware. Um, I felt I needed to step back, uh, for the rest of the process at that point. Kristen, who is our assistant finance officer, was asked to take over the review of the proposals and the council presentation. Um, I have provided a letter of full disclosure, as required by state statute. I did pass that out, uh, prior to the meeting, I did pass it out to all of the press, uh, that is represented here this evening as well. Um, so at this point, I will re, officially recuse myself from any of the discussion. I will turn it over to Kristen, and Justin, if needed, uh, legal-wise, to go through the information that's provided, and answer any questions that you guys might have.
Well, welcome, Kristen.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
That's just what you wanted to do, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, go ahead.
Um, so basically, included in the agenda packet is the breakdown of the fees and services available between Relia Bank and Great Western Bank. Um, Great Western Bank is the city's current bank, and the fee in their proposal is comparable to what we're currently paying. Um, all of the banking fees do come out of the general fund. Both banks offer similar services, and will be able to meet all the criteria outlined on the RFP. If there's any questions, I can try to answer them, and we do have both of the banks' representatives here, if I can't answer any of the questions, so...
Kristen, I guess I'd be interested, no, what prompted this, uh, I mean, we've had a relationship with Great Western Bank for a long time, what, what prompted this, that to go out for RFPs?
Um, it was my understanding that there was actually a couple banks that approached the city, um, and they kinda wanted to know when we could go out for new contracts, and the contract was for three years with the option to renew, and we opted out, and that's why. We had a couple other banks ask.
I'm gonna ask a question, because it was asked of me...
Okay.
Um, by one of the, the banks. The question is, what is the service charge with a scanner being used through Relia Bank, and what is the service charge without a scanner under Relia Bank's proposal for both entities?
Okay, so, Relia Bank had the proposal, um, with the scanner is zero, okay? Um, if we choose not to use a scanner, then it, I think their proposal was 500 a month. And Great Western was the same, no matter with a scanner or without a scanner. It was 950.
Asked of them in the, in the request for proposal, was it stated to quote both ways, or was it listed one way or the other?
Um, that, I, I'm not 100% positive on that. I believe, um...
Do you have your proposal, request for proposal?
I don't have that with me. Yeah.
Would one of you guys, maybe you wanna come up to the podium and, and let us know? And if you'll state your name. Thanks, Josh.
President, up at Relia Bank there. Um, the request for, um, banking services, uh, asked for both ways, for it to be quoted, and, um, Kristen was correct, it was $500 without the use of the check scanner machines, so... And, uh, if you were to do those yourself, um, we won't have a service charge.
You wanna explain that to me, what it means with and without a check scanner? Is that like a little machine you just run your checks through, or what?
Yeah.
Yep, the office up here will actually be checking, scanning the checks, and they would automatically go into the, um, into their account. So, instead of bringing the checks to the bank and having us essentially scan them in, you guys would be doing that service for yourself.
Just electronic deposit, basically the same things.
Yep.
Kristen, does the fact that, it's my understanding the utilities department has decided to stay with Great Western, does the fact that they're staying have any effect on the city as far as economies of scale? I mean, can you talk about that a little bit, if you could?
Not really. Currently, the city, we, the employees in our office, do the bank reconciliation, um, we do a lot of the, kinda the work with it anyways. The one thing that would be different would be, currently, we can transfer it just through our accounting system, the money. Um, now, if we had two separate bank accounts, we would have to actually transfer money. Um, we take payments at our counter for their utility bills, and then we'd have to do transfers as far as, like, payroll taxes, we're all one entity as far as payroll. So there'd be some money transfers with that. But as far as the actual work for the city, we currently do the deposits, and we do the bank rec, and all that, so...
Yeah, my understanding is the utilities has a little over 10,000 checks every month, and, and they didn't feel they had the time to do the scanning, cause it would, it would take them more time to do that, than to just take it up as a deposit.
Well, so was the RFP that was sent out, was it intended to be for both the city and the utilities, or was there a specific, uh, term in there, or an option, that they would be separated?
No, when it was sent out, it was for us as a whole.
As a complete.
The city and the utilities.
But, so it, the, so the terms are actually different with the utilities' decision than they were what was expected by maybe somebody as they got the RFP?
Yeah.
Okay, is that fair?
Yeah, it would be, because it's, when it was as a whole before, I mean, that was a request for bids.
Right, but now it's being split.
Split, yeah, so it would be different.
Right, it would be different, and my question was, is that fair? So, you think that's fair or not fair? No. I don't think so either. I think you should all be quoting on the same set of terms.
So, I think what Mike is suggesting is that, actually, the RFP should just be one for the city side and one for the utilities side before any action would take place.
The RFP wasn't true and correct.
Right, and I think that, that's a fair assumption, Mike, you know, so, instead of breaking it out, you know, on the fly, there really should be two RFPs out there. And I know during the utility conversations, they're very, very good with what is being presented, you know, to keep theirs with Great Western and so forth, but I think that's a very valid reason, I think.
Well, I think it's fair, I think, because then everybody's playing in the same set of rules, and they know exactly what they're, what they're bidding or quoting on, and I think it would be appropriate if, if we are going, if they are going to do theirs on their own, then we should, ours should be quoted on its own.
Yeah, I tend to agree with that.
I guess something else that caught my attention, still on the utility issue, is under the disadvantages, I'm quoting out of the, what was in our council packet, may not get as high of rate, or high of returns on idle funds due to fewer dollars invested. I guess I don't know what that dollar amount, and I'm guessing you probably can't tell us what the difference in interest rates would be either, I'm having a hard time trying to quantify that to make a decision here.
Well, I think that would take care of it within itself, if it did go two RFPs, we wouldn't have to accept any of those at the time when they came, but I think that would, they would be able to address that in those. Don't you think?
I, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what those dollar, what those dollar amounts are, I mean, do we have a good handle on what those idle funds are at any particular time? I mean, I realize the RFP might explain the difference in the interest rate, but I don't know what those, those idle funds amounts might be.
We'd actually have to go back, in the RFP, we do have what the cash CDs total, and that comes from our cash activity report, we would actually have to go back and just remove the cash and investment part from the utilities, and that would leave the cash left remaining for the rest of the city. That, that's the only way that they, they could come up and tell us what that is, and we could quantify that with an amount.
Okay.
Is the idle funds, is that the, those that are not invested in, or committed to CDs or anything, is it, are the idle funds as noted on here, are they the funds that aren't in any specific CD or investment mechanism that...
Correct.
So, they're the ones that, for our free cash, for the...
Yep, yep.
Our cash flow for the city?
Exactly, yep, that's, that's the money that, that we think we're going to need to cash flow within a six-month period, because most of our CDs go out a minimum of six months. So, yes, that just stays in our checking account, so that's what we're asking.
So, we should know by monthly statements about what our average...
Yes.
balances are there, just to give us a rough idea, and Glenn, I think that's, that kind of caught me today too, not knowing what that was.
Correct, we, we just have to go out and, and we'd have to separate the two for all of the activity. We give an average and a yearly total, all of that would have to be separated out, yes.
Well, it looks like we kind of need to do a redo here, is that fair to say?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And so, we have a motion now, so the motion is...
We do not have a motion.
Oh, we don't have a motion, I'm sorry.
So, can we just, how do you want to act on this? Because I do think they want to put this out for two RFPs, one for the utilities and one for the city.
This body can't do the one for the utilities.
No.
So, this body can do for our own, but, so it wouldn't be a motion for two separate, it would be a motion just for city funds, city proper.
Right. How do you want to handle this?
I would suggest a motion to reject the bids and, bid propos, or excuse me, proposals, reject the proposals, and direct staff to...
Reestablish an RFP.
Yes, yes, with the restrictions that you had just articulated, being that it would be for, for cities' use, not for municipal utilities' funds.
I wouldn't make that motion, do I got to repeat it?
I think it's recorded, yes, we have that. So, I do have a motion on the floor from Randy.
I will second that.
And Mike will second that, any other discussion?
Well, Mayor, the only other thing is, I know we have banking representation out here, I was wondering if they have any questions or any comments they would like to make at, at this point.
Yeah, you guys okay with that?
While they're coming up, just a quick comment, I understand why we're going this route, but in the future, I, I just think that if we're going to do bids, now the bid numbers are, are in the open, and I, I just think that doesn't work well in the bid process, so that's just a comment.
I just wanted to make a quick comment.
Hit the button there Kurt, tell us who you heard.
I'm sorry, my name's Kurt Trigo, I'm the Market President, Great Western Bank, I want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to bid the proposal. The only, the only thing that I can see is, it sounds like the council's kind of heading in the right direction. Originally, when we received that RFP, that's not the way it was described to us, that this was going to be split, this was totally a surprise when I read in the minutes that the Utilities Board was going to, wanted to do their own thing. That's not the way the RFP was put together, it was put together as a package, and that's the way we've been doing it for the last 19 years since we banked the, the city's thing. So, I think the council's on the right path of, of putting it back out for bids, you're right, Councilmen Roby, that, you know, you've kind of already let out the, the information already, but in fairness, the utilities, doesn't sound like they want to use those scanners, because there's a human cost, and that's something too, when you look at our proposal, we didn't put ours in there with a scanner, and there's a human cost that the finance office is going to have to do to run those checks, there's time that is going to be used. So, I think you're probably on the right path. Ultimately, you guys decide what you want to do, we'll be happy with it either way. There's no, we just want to provide good banking services to, to the city, and so does Relia Bank, so, and anybody else that bid, so, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks Kurt.
Thanks.
Dave, did you want to say something? Okay.
Is it on? David W. Johnson, owner and CEO of Relia Bank. Just as a matter of public record, Relia Bank is the official depository for Conneitt County, Hamlin County, West Central School District, T-School District, Hamlin School District, Estillane School District, Northeast Educational Co., public funds is what we do. And I, I think that the proposal that is, is being now, now rejected is probably a little bit, what do you want to say, we, we were bidding on the whole, whole thing, and, and now we're going to only, only look at half of it. And so, if it's, if there's any fairness or unfairness, it, it would be that, you know, to the, to the banks who are bidding on this. As far as the workability of, of scanners, they are very friendly, the, the human cost of doing it is actually as fast, may, may be faster, as you, as you read, as the check scanners read the handwriting, it is much faster to total up your checks like that, rather than doing with an adding machine. And so, the, so I think that, that probably, the reticence to change here is, is something that is, that you always got to, got to deal with, but it's actually faster to do it with the check scanners rather than to do it manually. So, thank you very much.
Thanks David. Okay, any other questions on this? So, we have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded, what we're looking for right now is a council action, so although... Yeah, Justin, you want to repeat that?
Sure, so, Mayor, the motion is for a rejection of the proposals received, and an instruction of the council that the city staff look at reissuing a request for proposal, given the restrictions provided here, which is that it would only involve the city funds, the banking services associated with those city funds.
Okay. All right, I'm going to look for council action on that motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Number 13, consideration of change order number one, which is a final to the contract with Knoll's Dragline and Construction Incorporated for the South Broadway Bridge Rehab Project, decreasing the contract amount by $29,329.74. I will look for a motion in a second, and then we'll turn it over to Shane. Motion by Don, second by Dan, Shane, if you want, take on this here for us.
Okay, I'll be as brief as I can. So, last year, we took bids to replace the South Broadway Street Bridge located just a block south of Highway 212, and this is the final change order to that contract with Knoll's Dragline Construction Incorporated of Sioux Falls. And as the mayor said, it is a deduction of $29,329.74. With that, it brings the contract down to $369,585.16. I would make one further clarification, and that is, through our agreement with Glacier Lakes Energy, they have been reimbursing the city for all of the funding efforts related to this project, and their final bill will also reflect the deduction of the final change order.
Any questions for Shane on this? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 14, consideration of bids for a dump body for the street department. Maybe we should have said like dump truck body or something like that, I don't know, that's okay.
I'll explain.
Give us a little idea of what's going on, Rob, and then we'll go and get a motion in a second.
What this is for is actually a dump box for that truck that you guys approved us to purchase here several months ago. And we did open bids on this on June 6, and we had two vendors that bid, Northern Truck Equipment out of Sioux Falls, and Safety Service Incorporated out of Aberdeen. The low bidder was Northern Truck Equipment, and the only problem was, they did meet all the specs, other than they did have vendor notes in there that said they would not transport as specified, and they also would not honor the 90-day timeframe to deliver, and then that they would not pay penalty over 90 days. And then, as far as Safety Service went, they did not meet all the specifications of the bid, so.
What, what didn't Safety Service meet?
Hang on, I think what I'll do is, if you're done explaining, I'll go ahead and get a motion in a second, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to get a motion in a second for discussion purposes.
Someone.
Motion by Randy. Can I get a second, by Bruce? Okay, now Randy, go ahead.
What specs didn't Safety Service meet?
We specified a 10-gauge A1011 steel for the sidewalls and the front, and they had, their spec showed they could meet 12-gauge grade 50, which basically is, it's, they're 12 gauges thinner.
Yeah.
And just not as strong. And then, as far as the floor, they were not able to meet the spec on the floor, which we specified 3/16 inch AR450 steel, which is a very wear-resistant steel. They, they specced a 3/16th grade 50, which is like a mild steel.
Yep.
And I think, let's see, everything else here did meet spec, and they did not have any vendor notes saying they couldn't meet any of the other requirements.
So mechanically, Northern Truck could meet it, but it was just some of the terms that were, were in there that they could not meet?
Yes, yep, they actually met all the specs with everything, the 10-gauge and all that, the hoist, the whole works, but they did specify that, let's see, no transportation included, delivery will be from between 90 and 160 days, no penalty if over 90 days, is how they wrote it, so, which we had specified delivered within 90 days.
What was, what was your bid estimate on this?
We had actually went out to quotes, or for quotes, and then after realizing, after getting the quotes, that we would exceed that $50,000 limit, or come close to going over that, that we should go out to bids. So, we figured we'd be real close, but after we did go out for bids, we did change a couple things in, in our specifications, that we wanted better safety lighting, and a tarp system for the truck, and then toolbox on the side, so we did add that. So, we ended up, we were hoping to be under $25,000, you know, before we added those pieces, and the bids came in higher than that, at 27.6 and 27.315.
But that's with all the add-ons, right?
That's with all the add-ons.
So, where are you at budget-wise?
Actually, we still had, I believe, $54,000 in the budget, so we're way under. We had had, that budget was part of carryover from previous trucks that we'd gotten, so we hadn't spent all that money yet, so we had carried over.
So, when are you looking that you are going to need this thing? It seems awful odd that you got a 90 to 160 day lead time, it's, it seems very odd to me that it's that wide a range.
Right, currently, we have an old international truck, a four-door truck that we use for our patch crew too, we call it our pothole patrol truck, so, we're actually, once we upgrade this box and stuff, that truck will, will go down the road, so, it'll replace that. But, yeah, the, the 90 to 160 days just seems out there a long ways, when we can, actually, I've had vendors tell me we can get street sweepers within 45 days, so, that's a lot more complicated piece of equipment than a truck box with a hoist, so.
If it's 160 days, are you okay with that? I mean, that's really the question, you can't count it in 90, right?
Right.
So, what if it's 160 days?
You know, we can, we can make do, we have been, so, if, if that would be the case, we could make do with that.
But your recommendation tonight is to reject all bids, right?
Well, based on the fact that they didn't, you know, they did meet all of our general specifications, but the only reason we were going to, that I wanted to throw that out was based on that they weren't willing to make it within the 90 days, and then, of course, the...
The delivery part.
Transportation, which the delivery isn't that big a deal, I mean, we can take care of that, but the, and then the no penalty generally, that, I haven't ran into that where we'd had to penalize, so, you know, and that's where I'll leave that up to you, because if we, if we did leave it as is and go with the low bidder, I mean, they're a good company, they've done a lot of work for the City Water Town, so, they used to actually have a presence in the town, but, yeah, so...
It seems to me like we, you know, again, the timing of it is your issue, but I'd rather get the truck that meets my physical specs, if I can wait, than to take one that doesn't.
Right, and, and I, I actually would too, I mean, I'd rather have the equipment we really need, and I feel it's best for us for longevity.
So, if we reject these bids tonight because they didn't meet those couple specifications, which can we legally do?
I, I would suggest you do it from a legal basis, if you don't meet specs, you don't meet specs.
All right, so then, what are we going to do then, have to go out for rebidding on this again?
Yeah, I'll have to modify the specs, and I'll make sure with all the vendors, which actually, there was another vendor that was interested but didn't get his bid in, so.
All right, so we need to reject this?
Yep. Correct.
Yes, I would agree. So, I do have a motion and a second on the floor for this particular one, I think our discussion is finalized here, I will look for council action.
Your motion and second is to approve?
Right.
So...
But can they just not, can they, can they go?
Unless you, okay, if you...
Or do you want them to have a motion to go back out for bids?
If, you can do it either way, but then you would need, he needs a second motion, a second to go back out for bids, so if you just would want to do it all in one motion, just do a substitute motion to reject it and go back out for bids.
So, we can do that, I had a, a motion by Randy.
Okay, I'll make a motion to... Okay, I'll make a motion to reject bids and authorize the street department to go out for rebid on this project. Correct.
Okay, so I have a substitute motion by Randy and second by Dan. Any other questions on this? Hearing none? I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Old business. Guys, I wanna talk about, if I may, there's numerous things that we still have to do here, but I wanna talk about the concert the other night. It was, uh, I got a message from the, from Chief McPeak, because there was, there was a lot of complaints, and my understanding is, is that there was two, there was two groups that came to play. One started at nine o'clock in the evening and finished at eleven, and then another group came in, and it was called Furball, Hairball. No, I knew that. I had to throw Furball out there. Reminds me of my cat. So anyhow, Hairball was there, and they cranked up the volume, and I think that's where it came in. They had thirty complaints on the music. They were, they were busy, only logged in fourteen of those on the CAD for noise complaints. Thirteen complaints were logged in on one CAD entry labeled Command Log Two, and one calls logged in under Command Log One. Both officers from our PD department were there, said the music was shut down at one AM. Hairball, again, did not start till eleven PM. No complaints were received until eleven oh five, when Hairball came on stage and lifted up the music substantially. I don't know what to think about, because there was, there was fifteen hundred people or so, my understanding, for downtown, and it was busy for everybody down there. But it really does, at that particular time, it interferes with a lot of folks that are trying to sleep, their kids, their grandkids, what have you. I just wanna open up some discussion on that and just kinda hear what you guys think about it. What can we do?
Is there any possible way of, and maybe this don't make any difference, but that we can see the area where most of the complaints came from?
Absolutely. It was straight north.
That's where the stages?
They were facing north on that, yeah. Any thoughts?
It's easy for, for any one, any one of us that don't live down or in that area where that, where the complaints are coming from, and, and not have to worry about it, but I wouldn't want that. Seriously, if it was an annoyance, and I've gotta put up with it time and time again over a summer, I would, I'd be tired of that. And we talked about this when, you know, a few months ago, when it came to us, and we talked about restricting the numbers, and we chose not to do that. I can understand people's frustration with that, and I know there's fifteen hundred people or two thousand people that participate in it, and I'd love to be able to have those types of things occurring, but, you know, is it just only thirty people that complained, and so the fifteen hundred? That's the difficulty in this. When is it significant enough that we need to make a change?
Have the people been informed downtown that this was, that these occurred, these, you know, these thirty call-ins?
No.
The ones that put it on? Was it shooters?
It was shooters, yeah.
Okay, so they haven't been informed, so they really are thinking it went pretty well. They don't even know that they had thirty complaints.
Right. You know, the thing is, is that my office got almost thirty of those same calls, I think, today, you know, that were upset about it. It just seems like it's the, it's the one group that we ever have problems with this, and they just crank it up extremely high. Why don't you turn on your mic so we can hear it?
It's gonna be two groups that are gonna be that way, and I mean, that's, that's just their, their style. It's gonna be them and Judd Who's that play around here that's gonna raise all the complaints.
Right.
So, but I, I don't think we can say who they can hire and who they can, so...
No, but we can control some of the noise, you know, how loud it goes out there, and so I just wanted to bring it up to you, that there's complaints out there. I know that not only did shooters get a positive reaction out of this, it was all of the facilities that are downtown that got positive results, you know, 'cause there's a lot of people.
In respect to Mike's comments, there was a second issue we talked, too, and that was the number of these we're gonna allow. And when you get that many complaints, the natural reaction is to pull that in and not allow a lot of these. So how many do we have scheduled for the summer after this one?
Tracy, Tracy is back there. He says two more, two more concerts.
Do we have any way to measure the sound level? 'Cause I, I think it's difficult. You say what it is, depending on the wind and what the night's like, it might be worse one, so if we could say so many decibels or something, I'm not sure that would even help, 'cause it's all relative to what the weather's like, I think, a lot of times.
Well, I, I think I'm a good meter. I live up at Lincoln School, and it was loud. But it didn't bother me. I like it. I get to listen to the show for free. And I'm surprised there was not more than thirty complaints, but it was very loud. I could hear the words clearly. It was almost like they were in my front yard. So I sat on the deck and enjoyed the weather and the music, and, but, and they, actually, they got two more events after this, uh, Judd Who, and I can't remember the other one. But shooters applied. They gave us a heads up, and we've been through this, and I was one of the officers, when we initially started this, I went all the businesses uptown, got input, and, you know, most people are in support of it. I talked to some people that were at the event, and they thought it was the greatest thing in the world, and they, that if they come back, they're going again. I would've liked to have been there.
Yeah, and I don't think there was any incidents of anything that was out of the normal or anything like that.
The officers that were there said it was very well.
Shooters say, I mean, these organizations that are doing it do a fine job with it. There's no doubt.
I know they have a lot of their own help.
Yeah.
You just made a suggestion. If we get the feedback back to shooters and what we had, and see if they can work on that, and I, my guess is if it's that loud, and the next concert, too, will get more complaints, 'cause now people are gonna get, I've heard it twice now, now I'm gonna call, too, then we're gonna have to address it. Do we wanna give a warning here and say, okay, here's your warning shot over the bow, and?
It's gotta be self-policed. I mean, it's good, it's good for everybody downtown, but we still gotta respect the people in the rest of the town, and I wanna see them continue. But, but there's another twenty thousand people, just like Steve just said, that we gotta have respect for their privacy also, so...
Was this Saturday night, Friday night?
That's where it's Friday night.
Friday night.
I'm north, but I didn't hear anything, but I probably wasn't outside, so, yeah.
You probably took your hearing aids off.
I need them. Maybe that's the problem. I need them.
You know, I think that's 'cause Bill went to so many of those concerts when he shot that. No, I think, you know, there's gotta be a happy medium here somewhere, I think, for these things, and, you know, if there's thirty complaints, who knows how many people were annoyed that wanted to complain but didn't, you know, so there's, there's probably a lot of folks that were disturbed that didn't call in, so...
So I think Kenny, maybe you could talk to shooters. It's just, let them know that there are people complaining, and if they can get some of these groups that are extremely loud to turn it down a little bit. Don't leave, don't leave too far, Tracy. I wanna talk to you again.
Yeah, absolutely. You can talk to them. So are we still happy with the one o'clock thing, or do we want, I mean, the way this was set up, it has to have Lee's or the police department and my approval together, and we've already authorized two more dances, but I think it is kinda open-ended, that if we wanna adjust, withdraw, pull them away, we have that right to do that, so...
That's correct.
So are we still good with the one o'clock, and then just ask them to try to tone down the music and hold it to the level of the first band and not go to the second band?
I think it would make a big difference, 'cause I don't know if it was the timing of it or if it was the loudness of it, but there wasn't, there wasn't the complaints.
Isn't it likely, though, the earlier one is gonna be more tolerated?
Right.
I mean, more so, I would think.
What'd you think? Fill us in.
They're a good concert. It was obviously loud down there on the street, but when you get two, you know, fifteen hundred people downtown roaming around, that's a good crowd. A lot of young people down there, a lot of people looking for things to do, so it's a tough call for thirty complaints versus a couple thousand people entertained. It is tough. They probably do go a little late. That's probably something that needs to be worked on.
I think personally, and I said it a few weeks ago when we discussed, I think one o'clock's too late, in my own opinion.
Yeah, but Steve also said that the first complaints started coming in at five minutes after eleven, when the second band started.
Right, it was eleven oh five is when the first complaint came in.
I will say, you know, I've talked to those folks from shooters before, too, and it makes it pretty difficult for them, revenue-wise, if they have to close up before one. When they pay that kinda money, 'cause a Furball, Hairball is not, is not cheap to get in here, you know, so they gotta, they gotta have that time, I think, to get the revenue they need.
Okay, well, I just wanted to bring it up. Kenny, you can, you can talk to Tom and Tom and just kinda, at least let them know that, that we're aware of some things like that, but we do appreciate the fact that they want to bring in things like this, and entrepreneurs that they are to put the dollars out.
See if he has some suggestions also, so...
Here's, here's one of the other things that is coming in front of me with a lot of calls right now, and it's about fireworks. And what they're asking is, because the Fourth of July is on a Tuesday or Wednesday, something to that, it's on a Tuesday, people are asking out at the lake and such, if they can do their fireworks on the third. Now, by ordinance, I believe, Justin, it's for the Fourth of July, is it not? Yes, I believe that's correct.
But that's my understanding.
So I think what they're asking, and they're asking the council if they would consider allowing fireworks on the third, 'cause there'll be fewer people on the fourth, 'cause they have to go to work on the fifth. So that's kinda what is in front of us here, and I don't know. You guys got some thoughts on that?
So would it be the third and the fourth?
Yes.
Okay, so opening up one more day?
Yes. Some suggested, I'm just throwing this at you, some have suggested to open up Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday at the lake and just let them rip. Probably not a good idea, but, you know, the third and fourth is really what they're asking for.
I guess as someone that lives out by the lake, I would have no problem going with the third and the fourth. They do it anyway, but...
It's kinda funny. We can go from no noise to a lot of noise in the span of one conversation.
Any concern on that? It does take council action, you know, and I don't think we can really bring that up right now.
Yeah, the ordinance thirteen oh three oh three is, you know, pretty specific about where and when, so it would take official council action to adopt a resolution for a temporary period of time, just for this year, to change the dates, or an ordinance to revise for the future.
Wouldn't that take a first and second read, then?
The ordinance would. The resolution could be...
A single read?
Yeah. It, well, we wouldn't be able to put it on this agenda as official action, because you need twenty-four hours' notice ahead of the meeting in order to put anything on the agenda.
Will there be a council meeting on next week? This Thursday? Could we not have that resolution, have it posted for Thursday?
There's, in terms of timeframe, I mean, there's nothing saying we couldn't.
Would you guys be okay with that, if we're okay on the third?
Does that give, I'm okay with it. Does that give the public enough time? 'Cause I'd like to hear some opinions on this one.
But, I mean, that, that really is the question, you know? That's, that's exactly it, you know, in our statutes, we have timeframes for ordinances because of the public hearing requirement, the publication requirement, the ten days ahead. With resolutions, we don't have that same requirement. So, I mean, the concern is, if you feel that that isn't enough time, it's not a statutory concern. It's more of a public policy concern.
I think they're gonna do it irregardless. I know they're gonna do it irregardless. They do it every year irregardless, but to make it official, I think we could get it on Thursdays.
You know, the thing is, they can look at it, and they do it irregardless, you know, of the ordinance, but if the neighbor calls Tracy and says, you know, this guy's shooting fireworks over here, he has to follow that ordinance and, and give him a ticket, so it's a thought.
I'm good with it. I, personally, I've never had a complaint out at the, with the lake residents about shooting fireworks on and around the fourth. It's always been, why can't we? It's really been more that. I don't know what you guys may see periodically, but I would, whatever it takes, I would take a look at it. I would support that. I wouldn't have a problem with it.
So Justin, let's go ahead.
One thing that I would just recommend that Shelley pointed out, and it is correct, that, you know, resolutions and ordinances both have effective dates, twenty days after publication, so there would need to be an emergency clause added to it.
Exactly, yeah. So you would have to invoke that, and I think that would be good, yeah. All right, so let's do that. Let's have that resolution with the emergency clause. Okay? Everybody on board?
I'm on board, but there are complaints. Glenn maybe hasn't had them, but there are complaints about the fireworks, and there are some real displays that go on out there, and if you have two nights, there's some guys that are pyromaniacs out there. They love fireworks, and they spend thousands and thousands of dollars, theoretically.
I think the thing is, though, Dan, if those folks that are like that, they could literally come into my office, and through Chip at the fire department and through my office, they could get the okay to do that anyhow.
Okay.
Yep. With a permit process, and they have to pay X amount of dollars for that permit. So I think those guys would do that. So let's, let's move on with that. I do wanna mention, this is very, very sad news. Beth Manti's son, Jim Holland, passed away late last week, thirty-three years old. You, you just can't imagine what Beth and Greg are going through right now, so I wanna, I wanna reach out to them and tell them that our prayers are with them tonight and, and in the future. It's a very sad time for Beth, and we fully understand why she's definitely not here tonight. Anything else that you guys wanna mention on that?
No, I had about a half-hour phone conversation with Beth yesterday. Just heart-wrenching and tough. They do, they do have a GoFundMe page. It's a young family, three children, one on the way, and she's going to school, so, and I'm not sure what the GoFundMe page is. I've seen it on Facebook a couple times.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'm gonna move on now to new business, and, thanks, Tracy, appreciate it. Kurt, you guys, Liz, Louis, you guys wanna come on up and give us an idea of what we've talked about and kinda what you're looking for? This'll be just early discussion. They can't make any action on this or anything, but I would like them to kinda get an idea of what you were approaching on.
Good evening. I'm Liz Christensen, the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club. With me tonight, I have Louis Canfield. He's the director of operations, and Kurt's here more on a volunteer side. Kurt was the facilities chairperson in our capital campaign task force planning while we were, I guess, planning the new facility and expansion process and the financing and making sure that we were, you know, getting all of our ducks in a row for the process. These past years, we have executed a successful campaign, thanks to the city and many community volunteers and donors that have given back to this project that will double the size of the Boys and Girls Club facility and completely transform our existing space with, with big renovations. We have just received our guaranteed maximum price from our construction manager about the last week or so. We are working with the city on a lease addendum. This is happening in the last week or so to finalize that, and now really the last step is to, I guess, move forward with our financing options to help us through this construction period. We will be placing over three and a half million dollars into renovations to the interior of the property and surrounding the club property, and we're asking the city of Watertown to consider a short-term loan to finance our construction. And the reason is, is because the city owns the building, therefore causing a little bit of a challenge for us to receive a traditional loan where we would need collateral.
Correct. And from my banking perspective, with the city owning the building, it's very difficult to put some type of construction loan together for the short term. Our organization was also involved in the Boys and Girls Club expansion up in Aberdeen, and it's a little bit different project, because the building there was actually owned by the Boys and Girls Club, and so our organization then put together some, a package that took in consideration the pledges, and then also a mortgage on that facility. Well, this is a little different outcome, and, and we're really kind of in a, in a situation where we have some permanent takeout financing through some electrical cooperatives and through some electrical cooperatives and some other organizations. They just don't do the construction financing. And we're going to be about projecting about a million dollars to a million two because we're going to be collecting pledges as, as they're going through this process. And the construction is expected to be done August of next year, right? Of two thousand and eighteen. So we're expecting that we're going to need to have a bridge, a short-term bridge, and then we would have takeout financing. So what we're asking the city to do is just to see if, if it's, it's a possibility, it's construction of your facility, of something that you guys own. Obviously, you guys are working out some other terms that I'm, I haven't been involved in those conversations about that eighteen-month lease arrangement. But, so we're just kind of seeing the temperature of the council to see if, if it's an opportunity. And then obviously we would be contingent that we would do our homework and make sure that we have takeout. So in a year from now, then when the construction is done, that the city would be paid back in full. And obviously you guys would charge some type of interest rate, so that's kind of our pitch. I don't.
Kurt, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I understand the ownership issue, but how does the bridge loan or the need for a bridge loan for construction differ collateral-wise from when the project's done and they stood on on the building?
Well, the, the, these electrical cooperatives get funding from different agencies. It's basically grant money. And it's for economic development, but one of the things that they're prohibited of doing is construction financing. All they can do is permanent financing. So we're kind of caught in a situation here of what do you do in the short term? And from an organizational standpoint, you know, talking about the banking industry, there's just not any hard collateral there that you can secure. You're just basically securing a large request like that with pledges that are really not binding. So it's very difficult to put some type of project together like that. We did put a project together like that, like I said, in Aberdeen, but we also took a mortgage on that property too.
A couple of thoughts. One, have we done something like this before? And two, I'm not saying it's a good idea, but just in general sense, a lot of times, what are you really looking for is a guarantee?
Well, that's, that's another issue there is not only, you know, obviously the Boys and Girls Club are a nonprofit. There is no guarantee or principal owners and there is no collateral. So there's a lot of red flags on that from a banking organizational standpoint. So you do bring up a good point, Don, is a guarantee, and that's possibly an option. I don't know if the city would be willing to even consider that either.
And I don't know if we can.
Yeah, I don't either.
Justin, do you know of any other options? Do you have any ideas for other options? I mean, offhand, no. I, I, I don't. It's not something that I've researched thoroughly. I mean, I'm aware of our ability to provide money, resources, capital in a broader sense. But in terms of how we structure that, you know, your guess is as good as mine. I mean, we can cite to the fact there is the, the Lions Club loan that's outstanding now. But my institutional knowledge is about as great as my knowledge of the law on this subject, which is to say not great.
Well, we're, we're not, we're also seeking options. I mean, this isn't the only option. So I just, you know, we're just trying to throw some ideas out there.
So who would, let's say we did do this, and so who is responsible for paying that money back in August of eighteen? Is it coming for sure from a loan from you guys or is it coming from potential donors or, or people that are contributing?
It's going to be coming from a loan, from more than likely, we've, two electrical cooperatives basically have said that they'll, that's they do. And they did the projects up in Aberdeen. So I, I've spoken to them. You just have to go through the process. This would be contingent that upfront, that we would have takeout financing or there would be no way. You know, you guys need an end game to this too, so.
What is takeout financing?
Meaning that they would take and pay you out in full of the balance that you have left. And then the payments would be made from the pledges that are received in the Boys and Girls Club. The loan is actually with the Boys and Girls Club. Of Watertown or whatever.
So at the end of the construction, when they take possession of it, that's when the loan would go into place and the city would be paid back?
That's correct.
And we would have a document guarantee that payback?
Yes, for sure, upfront.
Kurt, how soon would you need, over here, how soon, how soon would you need to, to know?
Well, I'll just talk a little bit about the timeline. Like I said, we just received our guaranteed maximum price from our construction manager. So now we have a price and kind of have to work backward from that. Bids are slated to go out in late July, and we would like construction to begin the end of August. So about two months from now, renovations are planned to take about a year. And then we will plan to move back and open the new, newly renovated facility in August of two thousand and eighteen.
Keep in mind one other thing. We're still using all the cash and all the pledges upfront. So this, this would be, the end game would be August of two thousand and eighteen. We're going to use our, all of our cash that we've collected from all the donations to date and as we get, you know, every month. So there's not going to be an immediate need right away. It's just that we would like, I'm one of those people, I don't want to go into a project blind. And I want to know upfront that we've got some interim financing and then we have the takeout at the end. So it's kind of a step-by-step process.
So you're really asking what Don said, a guarantee, so you can move forward?
Yep. That's what we're looking for, and then you guys would obviously be looking for, we don't want a permanent loan. We, we'll help you for the short term, but we want our money back.
Shelley, I don't want to put you on the spot, but where are we at liquidity-wise and are we in a position to readily do this?
Without going back and looking at our CAFR numbers, we, we have roughly about two and a half million dollars of unallocated funds in our second penny. That's not, that's not a ton, but, you know, that, that's, that's something for you. And I guess it depends on how short-term, short-term is. And then, you know, what rate of interest you want to put to that. You know, we could always take maybe an investment, a CD, and not renew it for a short period of time. I mean, there's, there's, I mean, I can't think off the cuff, but.
Shelley, one of the things I recall, though, when we were, when we were dealing with our bonding issue, you know, for the thirty million dollar bonds for the project, we had that discussion with our bond council and their concern was you don't have something big coming up that is not in there. I, I think it would behoove us to maybe even check with them and see if that would, if it would be a bond. Do you recall that or am I?
No, they basically just asked if there was any other projects that we would plan to bond, additional dollars, because that goes against our bond rating. And we said no in the next two years, but this would be something that we would bond.
So what a, so what a guarantee of a interim loan instead of our cash. But let's say that we wrote a guarantee to Kurt. Would that affect us in any way?
I don't know much about guarantees. That'd have to be him speaking.
And you know, guarantee can be different ways that Don's talking about. Maybe it is a certificate of deposit that's coming due, that doesn't get renewed, that it could be pledged or something and we could figure something out.
But I think there's a legal question. Can we guarantee something and how does that fit into budget? I think that's pretty, that's pretty messy.
Yeah, I don't, I've never run into that. I don't think you can.
I think maybe what we should do, Kurt, I absolutely appreciate you guys coming up here tonight and visiting about this. I think we're going to put this in the hands of Justin and Shelley so they can really, literally look into this on the what-ifs and what-nots. So that we can bring it back to this board and just say, you know, here's kind of what we found out, if that would work. You have a little time yet.
Yeah, I just, we just wanted to introduce it and get your ideas, and the city has been such a wonderful partner. And we want to continue that partnership, and this just puts us at a little bit better position to, like you said, look forward. And like I said, it was a very successful campaign and, and, you know, we do have a good deal of funds in our checking account to get us through a majority of the construction. The pledges that, you know, we will collect, that will be through two thousand and twenty. It was a five-year capital campaign, so it was, it was a wonderful opportunity. It's something that the community is in great need of, of expanding this facility. And because the city is the owner, I guess that's why we're coming to you to look for an extended partnership to help us through this next year.
So let's do that. Let's have you two dig into that and then bring it back to us with some ideas. We'll keep in contact with you.
One question. We heard, is there, is there a number, expected number?
Yes, our.
I don't know how you talk about this without having a number.
Yep, and I appreciate that. Our guaranteed maximum price for the construction is three point three million dollars.
So we would be looking for a construction interim at maximum of one point two five million.
That's the number I want to be.
And it could be less, but I just want you to know, a high side.
All right. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. Just so to remind you, we will be getting that dollar from the county, from the lease of that.
That'll go a long ways.
So I assume we will have it, but we can, we can.
It is almost nine thirty, isn't it?
I know, it is.
Liaison member reports.
I'll just make mention that we had a meeting today. The library board has completed their interviews for a new head librarian. And we anticipate a decision to be made by Wednesday, a final decision on the candidate.
Perfect. Anybody else?
I've got one comment, not a liaison report, but we'd be remiss if we didn't recognize a finance office for the, if I make sure I get this right now, the Government Finance Officers Award for Budget Presentation that was acknowledged here recently. So kudos to Shelley and her staff for how many years in a row you've gotten that. But I know that entails disclosing a lot more stuff than, than is necessary, but nicely some recognition for it.
Very nice. Thanks, Shelley. Thank your team. Any need to go into executive session? I don't think so. Otherwise I will ask for a motion a second to. Okay, I got Bruce and Glenn. Any discussion why we shouldn't adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, folks.